The January 23, 2019 meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Dr. Bo?
Here.
Dr. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitis?
Here. Labor one, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in its name, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in newspapers in accordance with the Open Public Meanings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Shannon Bruno to please come forward to the podium.
Thank you.
Shannon, along with her recreation responsibilities, has taken on the duties of renting the summer beach units. She takes on added assignments as she does all her tasks with professionalism and enthusiasm. Shannon has played a role in the increase of beach revenue and patronage through the years. She is signed to work with the beach manager and head lifeguards to do the administrative work for a safe, organized, and patron-friendly beachfront. Shannon has developed a great relationship with the beach staff and knows most by first At this time, reading and approval of previous minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes name. That's a lot. of January 9, 2019. Starting March of each year through October, her beachfront duties start along with her
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Bo?
Yes.
recreation responsibilities.
Dr. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitis?
She interacts with the public in a positive manner, and everyone who walks through Recreation Yes. There are no consideration of ordinances and no ordinances for introduction tonight. and Human Services doors are greeted with professionalism and a positive attitude. At this time, I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting. Shannon's responsibilities have increased, and she has realized added workloads are
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
the new norm. If anyone in the audience has any comments to make, please step to the microphone and When an employee performs their duties and the entire organization shows major benefits, state your name and address clearly for the record. as both Recreation and the beachfront has, it would be fitting to show Shannon the city's You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Okay, I guess nobody wanted to go first.
appreciation. Congratulations, Shannon, on being nominated as the February 29, 2019 Employee of the Month, and on behalf of the mayor and city council, we thank you for your service. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good.
Well deserved.
Patty Faraki, 246 Jerome Avenue, Oakhurst. I wanted just, one was at the last council meeting. I didn't mean to single out any employee of Long Branch when I was asking about the position of confidential assistant that was put in place. My intention on that was to point out the fact that there was a lot of employees that were awarded at the last council meeting, just like tonight. We had the presentation, the award for February's, or was that January month? So my intention was to bring out the fact that if I were a longtime employee in Long Branch, how would I feel knowing that a position was created or filled without, and especially when that position is at double the salary of the current clerical positions? So I just felt that that didn't seem right and didn't sit right, for one. The other thing that doesn't sit right is finding out that with the code blue, which Monmouth County declared last week with the cold, that there is no facilities in Long Branch that can accommodate someone that's very cold or doesn't have heat in their house, possibly has an illegal apartment, a room that they're renting, maybe there's children, and maybe there's fear to call the police to have them transported somewhere, although I also have found out that there's also no place for children. So I think this is a real big need in our town, and sending them to another town by way of calling the police does not seem like the right thing to do, and especially with having Monmouth Medical and Brookdale in our town. I think there should be some help for those who need emergencies, like freezing cold, no heat in their house, or actually, for that matter, maybe being too hot in the summertime when it reaches a certain temperature. So I think we really need to look into that going forward. Thank you.
Is the high school, John?
Yeah, Stan, would you mind, could you, Stan Zubba is our Director of Emergency Management and has been for nine, since 1991. Stan, can you address Ms. Faraki's question here?
We do have what it is, COHO, who, or COHO was declared, I called, I'm just out of the school, so we do have the high school, if needed, that we can open that up immediately. What we usually do is you call the local police department, and they'll get a hold of the county emergency management, and they will immediately take them, go see the person, and then take the local social services director. Am I correct in saying we had two people over this list a couple days, that they do that, and they were taken care of immediately? And we are, and we are meeting with different organizations, actually, the mayor is going to go in a couple weeks to meet, to see how we can improve our services here. But there is a plan, there is a plan in effect for COHO.
Because I know that there was quite a few people that were trying to get the word out that there were shelter for people who needed it. And they were told, actually, combined, that there was one or two longer police officers that they would know what to do about.
We did hear about that, the director has addressed that, we talked to him, so that has been taken care of, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have done that, and as I said, we're going to look into, also, you mentioned the cooling center, we do have the cooling center, which is developed for during the summertime, which we have opened up to the gas for people. But I do want to tell you that as we go along, we see the homeless people, a couple of normal people that we know, and we actually be friends with and stuff like that, and they keep recruiting any help.
Well, like I said, it's not only the matter of, you know, homeless or, you know, some job or people, whatever, you know, maybe there's children and family that are, you know.
Right, that kind of more on the social services. As far as that.
And I don't think any of them would be willing to call the police on the situation where they're.
Well, we are lucky to be here, just okay, we're all going to work on something.
Thank you very much.
And Patty, we can always do better. So we're going to, you know, we appreciate your being here, your comments and others, and we'll try, we'll try to do the best we can.
And maybe involve the schools a little bit more with that as well.
Mm-hmm.
I know that, you know, for animals, maybe shelter in the cold, you know, we can call, you know, and they can be put into, you know, SBCA, you can put them to other, eventually transported other places. And then some of the cat colonies put out, you know, those little boxes that suck them to help themselves, but that is something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Plone and members of the council. My name is Anita Kriegering, and I live on 161 Garrett Drive. I would like to speak tonight about, I live, I live in a group home, but personally, I would rather, what I would say, that I live in my own apartment. I live, I live independently in my own apartment, and there are a lot of needs, both in the winter and in the summer, that people with disabilities need help with. And I, sometimes I've, sometimes I've, I've, just, people may think, just because I live in a group home, I'm kind of isolated, and I feel isolated at times, which is not, I would rather not, I would rather not feel isolated, and instead to be, to be more involved in the community as a citizen. And there are services for people with disabilities, such as motions, motions, which is on Broadway, and there are a lot, there are a lot of other services, including this building that is accessible with the elevator, and the library is also accessible with the elevator and the accessible accommodations. What I'm trying, what I'm trying to say is that there are, there are things that need to be fixed, such as, such as potholes, potholes to, while, while smooth and easy access to the, to the streets in Long Branch, getting through Long Branch would be more safer. And given, and if they given them opportunity, just like I have, to, to speak at a council meeting, which makes me feel wonderful, makes me feel good, and it's, I feel that it should benefit the community as well. If there's anything I could do, I, Mayor Plone can always let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. And thanks for all you do.
Good evening. Happy New Year. And first thing, I just want to say amen to Patty's comments and to the young lady who just finished, because this seems to be a night where what we're focused on are the ways in which we can make life better for the citizens in this city. I think it's a great thing. So I actually was here to talk a little bit about what Patty had brought up, the question of homelessness, because recently, our Women's Bible Fellowship was informed that a woman with four kids was being put out of her home. Those kids go to school in Long Branch, and we were trying to figure out, well, where can she go? The house was full of mold, the bank was foreclosing on the house, and this mother and her four kids are going to be removed. And so we called the Long Branch Housing Authority. There's no room at the end. We called the Concordance, which is now, I think renamed something else, and they do work with families, but there's a long waiting list, and they don't house people. The shelter and freehold is inappropriate for a mother and four kids. We talked to churches, you know, we asked around, just trying to figure out, how can we help this woman? And it's connected to the fact that earlier, around Thanksgiving, we were in the church, St. Luke's, right? With Congressman Plone and Avery and some other people would come out to help feed the homeless, and we were just casually talking to some of the people there to find out, well, what would they estimate was the homelessness problem in Long Branch? You know, we don't, we don't like to think about that. You know, Long Branch is so richly blessed that, you know, the idea that we would talk about a homelessness, homelessness problem might not be comfortable for us, but it really is an opportunity to make our city better. So we would, Congressman Plone, myself, and Avery were talking about, well, could we think about ways to generate funds to have a facility in Long Branch that would at least on an emergency basis be able to house families in particular, individuals, of course, because most of the homeless that we know of in Newark, I mean Newark, in Long Branch, are adult men. But there are occasionally families, and this is a complicated problem, so I'm not trying to act like it's just a question of, you know, finding a facility, putting stuff together. It is very layered. But I do want to suggest that it's something that, that we ought to pay more attention to, and I was just wondering what the council might feel about creating a task force to just look, look at what's going on, what's happening. The one thing I do want to suggest that, is that there are many municipalities now across the nation that are looking at innovative ways to generate funding to pay for homelessness. So for example, taxes on online retailers, airborne, airborne B&amp;B taxes on shared housing. And airborne, by the way, is willing to, to allow themselves to be taxed for that purpose. Taxes on absentee landlords, or taxes on rental revenue that exceeds a certain amount. I mean, there are a number of things that can be looked at, as the council knows, and I work in Newark, and I want to thank you for allowing me to sit on the cable commission, but in Newark, we are working on this issue, and one of the things that we'll be doing is taxing the, putting fees on the containers that come through the ports. That's going to generate about $19 million for Newark, and they're going to spend it on homelessness. So I don't know what's the answer for Long Branch, I just know that we have an opportunity here to really work together on this, and I want to certainly offer myself, and I'm sure there are other people, but I would love to sit on a task force to try to work on this. Thank you.
So if I could, you know, we coincidentally had a meeting yesterday with Mr. Zubba.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear my name.
Oh, it's okay.
I'm sorry. Marsha Brown, 111 Jolene.
So we had a meeting yesterday with Mr. Jackson, Mr. Zubba, and David Perez, who is the only social worker in the state that's hired by, you know, a library. So, you know, this is very, like I said to Patty, this, you know, we can always do better, but one of the things we were thinking about, or we brought up yesterday, was that council president, what am I talking, council president Whitis has basically started what in essence is sort of a city volunteer umbrella organization, which basically, the idea at the least, is to provide an umbrella for volunteer organizations, and we would have, be sort of the umbrella to that, not in any way control it, but just keep the groups together and know, everybody knows what their various resources are and so forth. So we were thinking, Rose, I didn't even mention it to you, but we brought it up yesterday at the next meeting, that perhaps this might be an issue we could bring up there and see who might be interested in helping in that, in that cause. So we'll certainly do that. In the meantime, again, thank you for bringing it to our attention to be more aware of the situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Sam Logwinski, and I live 10 Pavilion Avenue, apartment 610. I think you know this building, it's subsidized apartment building. And in this building, usually, mostly, live old, mostly sick people. I want to brought up, maybe little, for you, little problem, but for us, it's a big problem. Four times a week, a garbage company called Republic, they came up to pick up garbage, and they come in, in backward, to the southern part, with beep, 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 all the time, beeper, and then when the containers from metal, they pick up and turning, noise, all this south part of, of building wakes, wakes, wake up. Only one favor, come a little bit later, at least 7:30, because mostly people over there sleeping on pills, pills, they have very bad sleeping problem, and they cannot sleep because garbage company, 6 o'clock, 5:45, 6:15, 6:30. I called several times to this company, never get boss, always receptionist, okay, I'm going to tell them, good, good, good. This building has a contract with this company, Republic. I asked them, yes, they have scheduled days of the week, but never, they not mention of time. So this is our request, just after 7:30, anytime, but not earlier, it's impossible, especially when, when it's summertime, when windows open, impossible. Wintertime, we close the windows, and it noise not so big, but anyway, noise, noise, cannot sleep.
So sir, it's a, it's a, you're talking about a private contractor who comes on to the property, correct?
I'm not sure.
Stan is, Stan, I'm sorry, maybe Mr. Zubba could address that.
Yeah, they're serviced by a private contractor, which is Republic. We got a number for them. I can call tomorrow and try to get through to them and see if we can.
Company calls pri.
They will schedule or something like that if you would like.
Okay, and if you, if you would like, I'm sorry, Stan.
No, that's not City.
Yeah, yeah. If you would like me to make a phone call to Ms. Sabrina, I'd be happy to, I could simply say, you were here.
I asked Sabrina, she said, it's not my.
Well, look, you know, I could call Mr. Barrett out in Ohio or wherever he was, I'd be happy to do that, to say you were here at the council meeting, and could you help out a little bit? I'd be happy to do that.
Oh, thank you so much, thank you so, so much. After 7:30, anytime.
Benson Lepore, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch, requesting one minute notification. It's my understanding, council, Father's Day car show has been restored this year for Sunday, June 16, with a rain date, the following Saturday, June 22. I'm not in a position to thank this council for that, because two members of Team Plone, Plone and Sully, allowed the Father's Day car show to be removed. I stood in protest against it over the past couple of years, so let's hope that the 25th anniversary Father's Day car show on June 16 will be the biggest and the best ever, and that the city give all its support to Lee Greenwood in organizing and running the event. Tonight, we have a resolution 1319, Safe and Secure Communities Grant Program, and I'm going to read one sentence out of it, which would bring attention to most of the citizens in this city, that something is terribly wrong. Quote, "One of the requirements is, they have a police department, and their number of violent and non-violent crimes per police officer exceeds 70% of the statewide average." That's by the Uniform Crime Report, Prime in New Jersey. We got serious problems in this city, and I've called for in the past several years that the state police come into Long Branch and run this police department and this city, because in order to have effective crime fighting in the city of Long Branch, we need to clean up LBPD. Mr. Martin, resolution 26418 on December 20, 2018, has the city received any funds from the bond issuance? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, how much?
Excess of 20 million.
Pardon?
Excess of 20 million.
Excess of 20 million, thank you. Council, NJTV, ran another program with a video and a form on who stands to gain from the newly created opportunity zones. They highlighted our oceanfront and the Kushner development with the Onata Hotel. They came out with the same argument I've made over the past few years. Why would the federal government provide tax incentives in a federal opportunity zone for prime oceanfront real estate? Likewise, why did the city of Long Branch provide a 30-year municipal tax abatement to Kushner on prime oceanfront real estate in Long Branch? Should have never happened, the most abusive tax abatement in the state of New Jersey. Mayor Plone, on December 26, you are present. Council was asked about Kushner companies buying the property on Broadway, and in light of the federal tax abatements, would they now honor their pledge of no new tax abatements? The response by the council, four members present, was quote, "No comment." Mr. Plone, will you uphold Team Plone's campaign pledge of no tax abatements, particularly to the new potential Kushner companies on Broadway? Will you uphold your pledge of no tax abatements, Mr. Plone, on Broadway? Yes or no?
I'm going to answer you, Mr. Lepore, but why don't you finish your five minutes, because I'm not going to just give you a yes or no answer, and you know that.
I want a yes or no answer, Mr. Plone. Will you uphold your campaign pledge of no tax abatements?
Mr. Lepore?
Yes or no?
I think I, I think I told you that I'm not going to give you a yes or no answer, but I will address it either now, if you let me speak, or as soon as your time is up.
Mr. Plone, Jersey City, apparently, you're not going to uphold it, because you're going to provide conditions, which gives you lack of credibility. Mr. Plone, Jersey City's Mayor Philip and Jersey City Council has withdrawn any tax abatements from Kushner companies and Schuster. What are they doing right that Long Branch is doing wrong, and not rescinding the tax abatements? Thank you, Mr. Lepore.
Okay, so, Mr. Lepore, let me start, I'm going to, I want to address two things that you mentioned. First, thank you, I'm glad, I'm glad you appreciate that the car show has been moved back to Father's Day. Just so you know, and I think you probably do, that that is an administrative decision, it's not a council decision. So you're saying that Councilwoman Sully
to the new potential Kushner companies on Broadway? Will you uphold your pledge of no tax abatements, Mr. Pallone, on Broadway? Yes or no?
I'm gonna answer you, Mr. Lapore, but why don't you finish your five minutes, because I'm not gonna just give you a yes or no answer, and you know that.
I want a yes or no answer, Mr. Pallone. Will you uphold your campaign pledge of no tax abatements?
Mr. Lapore?
Yes or no?
I think I, I think I told you that I'm not going to give you a yes or no answer, but I will address it either now, if you let me speak, or as soon as your time is up.
Mr. Pallone, Jersey City, apparently you're not gonna uphold it, because you're gonna provide conditions, which gives you lack of credibility. Mr. Pallone, Jersey City's Mayor Philip and Jersey City Council has withdrawn any tax abatements from Kushner companies and Schuster. What are they doing right that Long Branch is doing wrong, and not rescinding the tax abatements?
Thank you, Mr. Lapore.
Okay, so, Mr. Lapore, let me start. I'm gonna, I want to address two things that you mentioned. First, thank you. I'm glad, I'm glad you appreciate that the car show has been moved back to Father's Day. Just so you know, and I think you probably do, that that is an administrative decision, it's not a council decision. So you're saying that Councilwoman Selly and myself supported that? Inaccurate. We always-
Excuse me?
Again.
I stood up at those council meetings alone, objecting to that move, and you had your opportunity, Ms. Selly, and you never objected. You could have done what I did.
Mr. Lapore, please let the mayor finish.
Mr. Lapore, if you'd like me to finish, I will. If you don't, I won't.
I couldn't care less right now.
Well, then I won't.
Fine, because you have no credibility on the tax abatement issue, Mayor Pallone, and I suspected that. Avery Grant held true to his position on no new tax abatements in the campaign.
Mr. Lapore-
You, Mr. Pallone-
Your time is up.
Lied.
Please sit down.
Okay. Now, I, now that he's, now I would like to address it, if you don't mind. I just don't want to go this back and forth. Let me explain something about the car show first. The last administration did not want the car show on Father's Day. Councilwoman Selly and myself always did, and one of the first things we did when we came into office was say that we want to bring the car show back to Father's Day. This council all supported it. Quite frankly, we kind of made that decision immediately when we came into office. So for you to, to say, Mr. Lapore, oh, there we go.
No, Mr. Lapore.
There we go.
I wrote the letter requesting the Father's Day car show.
Your time is up.
And, 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 and Mr. Lapore, you know it's not my decision as a council person to do that. You know it's the mayor's decision, but yet you want to say otherwise?
Because it is otherwise, Mayor Pallone.
Okay. So I, I hope I made myself clear. All of us here wanted the car show to be back on Father's Day as soon as we took office, but that's what we're doing. So for Mr. Lapore to say otherwise, he's just flat-out wrong. Okay. Now, now-
I'm sorry, you're being rude.
And so is he.
No, you are.
I'm just answering your question. If, if I disagree with you, or, or you misstate the facts, that's not being rude, sir.
Well, you said, "Mr. Pallone, the truth always counts," and they're not.
Mr. Renon, the date of the car show, is that an administrative decision, or is that a council decision?
It's an administrative decision, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Kawat, is it one of the first things that I asked you about changing the car show to Father's Day? Mr. Zubba, did I ask you if there was any problem with changing the car show as it was presented last year, that it was a problem?
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know what you, what you would want to hear, Mr. Lapore. It's just inaccurate what you said.
Oh, it isn't.
Let me move on. Okay, no, it isn't. That, okay. All right. To your tax abatement issue. So let's be clear, Mr. Renon has a lot of experience with this. In Jersey City, was there a finalized redevelopment agreement in Jersey City when Mayor Philip decided that he wasn't going to issue a tax abatement to the Kushners?
And, well, the, the answer is, there wasn't, and in fact, what the argument is, is that he refused to accept the application for a tax abatement for one Kushner company in favor of a different Kushner company. So I just want to make that clear. Jersey City did not, has not revoked anybody's granted tax abatement. That's not what happened there. So I just want to make sure that's, that's pretty clear.
Okay, and now to address your thing, your issue, Mr. Lapore. Yes, you know I voted for it. Of course I voted for it, and I gave very specific reasons why I voted for it. And are we going to rescind it? My opinion, legal opinion, and I believe I'm speaking for the council, is no. We don't want to get into years and hundreds of thousands of dollars in litigation with, with this issue. We are moving forward. So if you want to say that a year from now, or six months from now, or something else, but, you know, we inherited a financial agreement that unless we want to do extensive, you know, unless we want to get into litigation for years and/or hundreds of thousands of dollars, because, again, Mr. Renon, tell me if that's what would be anticipated or expected, then we can do that. Sure, sure we can do that, but are, is it my suggestion to do that? It's not. Is it Mr. Renon's suggestion to do that? No, and I don't think the council wants to do that as well. So I hope that answers your question.
No, no, are you giving tax abatements to the Royal Royal? Yes or no?
Do we want to, you know, I'll be happy, I'll be happy to engage, Mr. Lapore. I have no problem with it, but, you know.
At this point in time, Mayor, I don't know that there's anything else to say, because there's nothing before the council. When, when the matter comes before the council, we'll discuss it.
So then if you're not addressing-
Mr. Lapore, this is not a back, this is not a back and forth, and you have to stop interrupting this meeting, and you have to stop trying to disrupt the meeting. Please.
Let me answer the question.
I'm sorry, you're-
Do not give him a-
Please be seated.
To address something else that Mr. Lapore said, that we gave tax abatements to another beach club, that is not true. We did not give any tax abatement.
You don't understand. I never said that.
You got it?
Okay. All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Lapore. Please be seated.
You're not getting away with this statement.
What is the miss-
You can't, you can't, it's out of control.
We have nothing we're to say. Yes.
Sure.
Ms. Clerk, I'm gonna give you the one-minute warning, okay? I broke my own clock. Last night, at a council meeting in Asbury Park, and the reason, oh, Ernest McNolly, Asbury Park, New Jersey, born in Long Branch. I'm still involved in both cities, so that's why I come. Last night, Covenant House from New York partnered with a local developer, a nonprofit developer, and they approved a second, well, it looks like a home, but actually it houses five people in need, late teen up to 21. And they only had an Asbury for 21 year, for females, for males. So they proposed a while back before the council to add another home, just like it, looks like a home, and make it for women. And it came up for its final approval last night, and it was granted. So knowing both cities, I, I would say any programs like that, and if you keep, keep in mind, I met the man who runs all the Covenant Houses, who's from Franklin Lakes, New Jersey, who runs not only New York, but all the New Jersey facilities. He's very interested in cities like Long Branch and Asbury Park and Neptune, where there are youngsters on the street, and of course, his covenant has both mental illness facilities, drug addiction facilities, and sort of social, down-on-the-luck facility, which, this is the one they, they built. So I would just like to apprise you that, and hopefully, maybe you'll consider, because Long Branch has a lot of vacant lots, and if you go and inspect what they built, it fits right into the motif of the city block, and, and ultimately, if they ever end the program, it is a zoned, exact, five-bedroom home, zoned, for nonprofit use. So that means, if they picked up and left, you could sell it as a one-family home. So I think that would be good for Long Branch. The other issues I wanted to talk about were, if you read about what's going on with the governor, not the governor, the Attorney General, he's finding in, since there's only two cities in Monmouth County, Long Branch and Asbury Park, one has about 30,000, the other has, I think, 15, that it's time for Citizens Review Board to come back. They're usually volunteer, they're usually made up of the community, and what helps is, like, you know, you have nice meetings like this, where you're giving employee awards, and then we want to get into the thick of money and arguing. It, it doesn't really fit, although it's important. You know, sometimes it, it's important. So with the Citizen Review Board, there's like another venue for citizens to come in, be represented, and the city to be represented, and we could kind of get into it without, you know, feeling like we're being not nice to each other, which, that's not the case anyway, but it could appear that way to someone riding by that this is a, an antagonistic meeting. I don't think it is, right? Oh, okay. So, so that, that was, and, and the other thing is, there's an old position that some municipalities used to use. It's usually done on a volunteer basis, and it usually comes with a city employer, someone who's considered an elder and very knowledgeable of that city, and it's called an ombudsman, and then we know it from university. They have one at the Superior Court, et cetera, et cetera. An ombudsman is basically a volunteer person who works whatever they want to, flexible hours. They have an office in the city, and it's a place where citizens or anybody, residents, can deposit problems, like, you can't sleep 6:30 in the morning there. Well, you call the ombudsman, the ombudsman and their group then start to filter it to Mr. Zubba, to the mayor, whatever. And it kind of gets things done, and that's an opportunity that you might want to think about. The other thing is, I, I agree with some of the other people. You've got to do something about the Long Branch Police Department. The numbers are staggering. I mean, you've, you've locked up four or five in the last few years. They're getting arrested for drunk driving, it's out-of-control violence, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was my part.
Avery Grant, 405 Atlantic Avenue. I'm getting very concerned now about the housing and the homeless issue here in Long Branch, and I hope that we're not going to see a replay of the past administration. I understand that there will be some affordable units in the Lower Broadway, but it'll be off-site, and I think that's something that should not happen. You know, with Long Branch tomorrow, as part of that meeting, and I asked if there could be some units along the oceanfront. And Pata said, yes, we did that in Jersey City, we did it down in Baltimore, but Long Branch wanted an ambiance. As an engineer and a planner, I knew what that meant. That meant exclude the people that you're displaced within the domain, and these people need a place to live. So I'm very concerned that you provide for the homeless and provide for those who need affordable housing. It's a sincere effort that is being put around the, the state. And you mentioned Osborne, Osborne. I was the second chairman of the county's Office on Aging. You know how far back that goes. And through the state effort, we established a state ombudsman program for senior issues, and you could establish a local one where people could come to and you say, look, this is a problem, you can solve it. But as I say, I'm kind of concerned. I hope we're not seeing a replay of the old administration, because they had denied homelessness. As a concerned citizens organization and the Afro-society, we were going to be given a house right next to the Union Avenue Fire Station, and we're going to convert that to a homeless issue. And the mayor at that time said, we don't have any homelessness. And Kennedy, who was a contractor, he was going to do all the renovation for us free. And the next thing I know, they get it to the firemen to practice training, and they burn it down. And you know, they chased Reverend Kevin Brown out of town. So I hope that you're not going to replay this whole issue, because it's going to be a big concern of mine, and I'm going to work towards it. This is the first time I voted for a Republican treeholder, because John Curry and I, we worked together to get a homeless shelter rebuilt. Well, I wanted to use the barracks on Ford Monmouth, but they decided to rebuild, which I try, I oppose, and they built it too small. There's going to be 16 beds for men and five for women. So there's a strong issue here, and Long Branch has to show the sensitivity. Even behind the Long Branch, the Lower Broadway, there was a box city. You might not have known about it, but our church used to take food down to the people who were living boxes back there, but yet they said they didn't have homeless in the city. So I'm extremely concerned, and we're working now with Senator Singleton and Single Rice on tax abatements. And we've gotten about what we want in the law, but we got one little jab, but we haven't been able to break yet, because there's too many of this going. As a city engineer and the East Orange Public Works Director, to get the first developer in, I promised to knock down two blocks of buildings, put in a sidewalk, bring up the utilities. And I said, I'll even throw my wife in to get you here. But after the first one, they got to pay through the nose, and we could use this money, particularly the city. We, Board of Education came to the city and said, we need a fifth day sponsored by the city for our summer program. And the city said, no, we can't do that. Well, that's a disgrace, because you've paid all this money, where you got these rich people coming in, and, and they advertise in the paper, it's 30-year abatement. And here, I'm a senior citizen, and I'm paying $6,000 on my house, and living here, no kids in the school or nothing else, but I'm paying taxes, and they're not. So I'm getting pretty upset over this whole operation. I hope that you will find a task force to kind of deal with this and make Long Branch come back as a city that believes in its people. Under previous mayors, you know, under the previous mayors, they've shown a real concern for things, and I think that you, you have the makings that you can do this, but you have to show to the public that you have that interest and that we, we want to work with you, and I told you, I'd be happy to help wherever I could. So please, listen to the people. There is an issue that we need to deal with. So thank you very much.
So, Mr. Grant, this obviously is a complicated issue. It's a layered issue, as you, as you indicated. I have a lot to learn here. I think maybe we all do. So, yes, if you can help us, I know Pastor Romero, I mean, you have some great services there on Tuesday afternoons. If you can help us, I, I'll call you this week, if I may, if we could set something up, and maybe we can get a few more people together and see how we can help. I know it's not easy. I know it's costly, everything else, but like I said, I have a lot to learn, so I'm looking for any help I can get, if that's good.
That sounds good. If you have the willingness-
Thank you.
Then we can do something.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll keep it short. My name is Daniel Schlinger. You know my father. I have no home, no address. I'm actually one of the homeless, speaking for the homeless. I did talk to Stanley Zubba about the Code Blue. He's gonna call me when he gets all that figured out. I was the one that actually sent links to Stanley and Lisa Wilson, Dr. April Hurley. There is nothing in Long Branch, nothing for the homeless. Now, I'm in West End. I'm lucky. I'm good. Now, the people on Broadway, I'm not sure where they go. I know some of the people, I don't know how many homeless there are. There is no tally as to how many homeless, because they're afraid. Nobody wants to step forward and say, hey, I'm homeless. You don't see them in here. You're never going to see them in here. They'll be at McDonald's for 30 minutes. There's nowhere for them to go, to stay warm. Minus 17 degrees two days ago, and I was out there. I called the police station, they had nowhere, they said, we don't know. There's no warming center. Two-on-one had, on their website, the Long Branch Senior Center as a warming center. I called, they were closed. I called, they were closed. I called the Martin Luther King Day, closed. That's a warming center? The only place that was open overnight homeless shelter was Trinity Church in Asbury, from Monmouth County. Not Pre-Hold, not Red Bank, not John Bon Jovi's place, nothing. Long Branch had no answer. They just said, what, you're on your own. That's it. Just wanted to give you guys a heads up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes. Okay. At this time, Councilman Viera, do you have anything to say?
Yes, I would like to thank everybody for coming tonight and express your expressions. I, it's, we listen. We'll try to do the best we can.
We'll try to do the best we can, and we will be with you and with the homeless. We're going to try to dress that, have some place to, so you can stay warm. You know, it's a warming place. It should be open. And we are going to work on that and do our best as we can, and thank you for coming again.
Councilwoman Lo?
So, you certainly gave us reason for pause tonight with so many comments about the homeless, and particularly your firsthand experience with things that, the idea that if information is out there, information has to be correct, and if services are supposed to be available, then those services need to be available. So, I think I'm...
At least two or three years early.
Uh-huh.
When they issue a Code Blue, like, there's a lot of people that don't have phones. They don't have internet.
Right.
They don't know.
Yeah.
Let's say, you know, they huddle around McDonald's on Broadway, because that's where most of the homeless are.
Mm-hmm.
And there were people that, or at least one person I know of, that made up flyers to carry, as you said, the information.
Yeah.
And...
Yeah.
The 2-1-1, that's our website. We can have them on the 30th, and go to 21st.
We would...
They're already minus 17.
Yeah. We'll be very happy if you could stay at the end of the meeting and we can discuss things with you. We appreciate it. Yeah. And just my other last comment, and this is to you, Anita. You know, we're all role models in different ways, and your commitment to this city and your commitment to showing up at all these council meetings, if we had more people with that same commitment, it would be spectacular. So, we thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilwoman, would you like to speak?
Good evening, everybody. I usually don't have too much to say, and I don't again tonight, but I would like to thank you all for coming out tonight, because it is cold, and for us to sit up here and not have an audience, that's kind of, it's hard to do. But we do thank you for your comments, and we'll do what we can to help all of the homeless. And thank you very much.
Mayor Pallone?
Yeah. I also would like to thank everybody for coming this evening and for your comments. I just have a few, a little community report here. Some of these things are repetitious, but I just think it's worth repeating. So, as you may know, a new bulk waste and brush schedule was adopted at the last council meeting. More information about this schedule is on our website and Facebook pages. We believe this new schedule will bring cleaner streets to the city of Long Branch. Our goal for changing the schedule is to have a more efficient EPW department, offering more services to residents, and to have cleaner streets. More time will be allotted to have services such as the street sweeper and leaf vacuuming. Again, a reminder that we have a weekly email blast every Friday. You can sign up through our website. Visit longbranch.org. Our weekly email blast is information from all our departments, event and program flyers, and all information that is Long Branch-related. Again, I may be a little repetitious, but actually, since we've been talking about this and putting it on social media, we've spiked in terms of people who have signed up, which is a good thing. Just a little side note, which I just found out myself. On January 14th, members of the Long Branch Police Department Honor Guard proudly presented the colors at the pre-game ceremony at the New Jersey Devils game at the Prudential Center. They were accompanied by a large group of supporters made up of friends and family of the Long Branch Police Department, who enjoyed a game of broom ball on ice after the game. So, thank you, Police Department, for that. You'll notice that City Hall has recently been decorated with more historical documents and pictures on the first and second floor. You can obviously see them around this room. They're growing throughout City Hall. The first floor displays many old pictures of the railroad stations in the city. More artifacts can be viewed in the council room and in the foyer leading into the council room. Thank you, Congressman Frank Pallone, for the decorations. On Saturday, January 19th, the city, in conjunction with Long Branch Free Public Library and Martin Luther King Guild, hosted a Day of Service event, and it was really, really very successful and very nice. There were over 60 people who were in attendance, and it was people of all ages, and they created mini libraries out of crates that will be donated to areas in need. And, you know, Martin Luther King Day itself has been designated as a Day of Service, and it was just very nice to see such a great turnout at the library, and hopefully, we'll do that again next year or something else on a larger scale. But thank you for all the residents who participated. On or about January 21st, the boardwalk from Melrose Terrace to Morris Avenue will be closed for construction. The focus of the project will be power and lighting for the new carousel, which is set to open around May, as well as other beachfront needs such as plumbing. Construction will take place for approximately two weeks. Walkers and runners will not be able to enter the boardwalk in between these points. Signs will be posted where beach access is available, and the ADA pads that are used on the summer on the beach, unfortunately, are not there. So, thank you for your patience and your cooperation during this time. And finally, the 2019 seasonal beach badges are on sale. They were from November 1st, and that sale ends on January 31st at the Recreation Department, which is at 231 Wilbur Ray Avenue, and the Tax Office here on the first floor in City Hall. The prices are $40 for adults ages 18 to 61 and $25 for students ages 14 to 17. I believe that's a $5 savings, if I'm not mistaken. And please note that these badges are for Long Branch Municipal Beaches only. So, thank you again, and have a great week.
And I'd like to lastly say that, you know, we're not only here to make important decisions, and sometimes they're very difficult decisions to make, but we're also here to hear your concerns and to serve you. And we hope that you feel that you can always come to us with any concern that you may have, and we will do the best to our ability to address those concerns. And, you know, we're always open to new ideas, and we're here for the community, and we are the community, and we're, you know, our goal is to work together. So, I just want to thank you all for coming out and, you know, sharing your concerns with us, and, you know, we hope that we can do, we will do the best that we can to, you know, resolve the issues that we have. Thank you. And I need a motion to adjourn?
No, we don't.
Oh, no, I don't.
Captain President, actually, we need to go back in closed session to finish those two items.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So, we need to, a motion to go into closed session to conclude the last two items on our closed session agenda, and we should make an announcement. George, we will not be taking any action tonight, so there will be no further action after the closed session.
Do I need a motion to go to close?
Second.
Roll call.
No move.
No move.
Second.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, and have a good evening.